Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. Invited guests and everyone in attendance. Also want to welcome our city manager, Mr. Stephen Carter, our deputy city attorney, Mr. Challenger. Also want to recognize our clerk, City Clerk Deborah White, and my colleagues on council. And Ms. White, would you please call to roll?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant.
Present.
Dr. Dotson.
Here.
Mr. Hugel.
Present.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Tillitt.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Here.
Thank you.
Manager Carter. Sir, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, sir. First of all, good evening to all of you. So much for allowing us to be with you this afternoon. You know, this was a pivot from what was originally scheduled. It was supposed to be a general room, but had to be rescheduled. Still looking for new time for that. As soon as we can find a new time, we'll put out a new schedule for that. But tonight, we're going to have two presentations. First one's naturally going to be on the proposed budget. The changes that have been made from what were originally proposed to budget to the budget that we're proposing now for adoption. And once Mr. Trey is done with that, we'll have a discussion on a possible revenue sharing process for us in the school system. So that's not something that we're going to ask you to vote on anything tonight. That's just in preparation for us for how we're going to move forward. And just like letting you know what's going on with that so that if there needs to be adjustments made before we actually embark on the process, kind of know where this council stands. So first presentation is Mr. Trey Burke.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening. Mayor Glover.
Evening, Ms. Burke.
Vice Mayor Moody, members of city council. Each year, the city manager proposes his annual budget. And over the following weeks and meetings, the city council provides comment and changes to the budget, which will be adopted and enacted. This presentation covers the reconciliation between our, between the manager's proposed budget and the budget up for adoption in the city council meeting tomorrow evening. This presentation will review the key changes that were made to the initial proposal and walk through the final adopted budget of FY 2026. First, I will walk through the key additions that were made to the budget. First and foremost, we added $1.5 million in additional funding for Portsmouth Public Schools, bringing the total increase to 10% over last year. We also allocated $150,000 for retirement supplement, for retiree supplement. An additional funding was provided for community programs, including Complete the Puzzle, Police Athletic League, and the Man Foundation, all totaling $175,000. We also allocated $163,000 to cover the city council salary increase. These increases were funded through several adjustments. First, we reduced the citywide paving allocation by $700,000, eliminated an assistant director of properties management, eliminated a pay initiative in Department of Public Utilities, and a meter replacement program in the Department of Public Utilities. We also projected new revenue for the speed camera program and realigned various initiatives to balance the appropriation. This slide shows the detailed changes between our, between the manager's proposed and adopted budget. Looking at the general fund, you can see the school's contribution increased to $82.8 million, reflecting the additional $1.5 million. We introduced new funding for community organizations. And for revenue, you can see it as well. We're showing the increased transfer from public utilities, the $311, 749 for speed camera fines, and increased the transfer from the Department of Public Utilities at $402,898. Overall, the budget increased by a modest 4.4%, or $1.2 million, from the original proposal. Portsmouth Public Schools is now again 10% higher than FY '25, showing a commitment to education. We're also continuing the retiree supplement to support our former employees. Our fund balance appropriation increased by 6.5%. And if I could go back, there was an error that was fixed here. This showed a decrease. This was actually an increase from $7.5 million to just over $8 million on that one. And that was on the original handout provided to the council. So if anyone was to make that change. All right. I'll now pause as an opportunity to, for questions and discussion about the reconciliation between the proposed and the adopted budget.
Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Trey, is the, what's the breakdown on the retiree, the stipend per retiree? Is that 1,500?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilwoman Bryant, maybe you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Can you explain the speed camera fines? How that, how we get that change?
So we looked at year-to-date because of the timing and because of when the actual checks were submitted to the city. We didn't know the first, and probably the second time I looked at the revenues, I didn't, I didn't have the numbers.
Okay.
So it kind of got through without being able to project anything. But once we got a few months of checks, then we were able to project $312,000.
Okay. So we're not setting out speed traps and collecting money?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
These aren't new. These are from the ones that's already there.
Got it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Moody?
The $700,000 in paving, how does that work out to any specific projects?
Take that one. Unfortunately, we don't know the specific projects yet, all right? As we started to work, as we start to actually work through the paving list for next year, that's when we're kind of determined what can and can't be done. Again, we have to go back and reevaluate the conditions of the roads, you know, what's the most needed, so that we can reprioritize based on removing some money from that budget.
Okay. Stay tuned.
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas, maybe you have the floor.
Regarding the school funding, I understand that that still doesn't reach fully the request from the schools. And looking at the last school board meeting, they mentioned just some of the programs that would be impacted by that, that request. Other than the, I think we looked at, wait, let me look at it. So the paving, eliminating the director of properties management, pay initiative, projected speed camera, realigning initiatives, were there any other avenues that we could consider for that gap in funding? That wouldn't?
Wait, take that one.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes. Based on some information that you provided, and I sent you an email just recently on that. But there are some things that we can do to get further toward that 1.9 million that you're talking about. We can further reduce the street paving. One of the things that we looked at doing was deferring the city raises for half a year. The other thing that we did was look at raising the taxes. So those are three options.
Okay. Which are options as well. Okay.
Yeah. If you start cutting, you're gonna, there's, there's gonna be some hard choices to be made, so.
Thank you. I'm looking at the, you know, you just sent me.
Yeah, I just sent it. And I apologize for that. Mr. Trey sent it to me over the weekend. I just forgot to send it to you.
Thank you.
Councilman Hugel, you have the floor.
Yeah, so, so let's talk about the schools. Could you pull up? My wife is mad at her.
Yeah, alternate presentation.
So I spent a little time this weekend kind of pulling together some history. And started with the brief that I delivered when the schools came to the last city council back in October to ask for a reversion of the end-of-year surplus. And updated those slides with some additional information, so. So you can see, second line down shows the city contribution to the PPS general fund over the last three years, and then what's proposed this year. So next line down beyond that is kind of a year-over-year increase. You see from '22, '23 to '23, '24, 3.8 million. But then, the budget that's currently being executed, the last year, city council increased the year-over-year contribution by almost $12 million. Started out at 15, and then there was some state funding that came in late that reduced our contribution to around 12. The proposal that's, that's the budget officer just presented is about 7.3 million increase year-over-year from, from where we were last year to where we are this year. And I think that's important because in just in the last two years, we have increased the city contribution to the schools by over $19 million. So $19 million out of 83 million is a huge percentage. So significant increase even with where we stand. Now, I got it that they want $1.9 million more, but I also know that we gave the city manager our green light to go do negotiations with, with Dr. Bracy. And where we landed was where the numbers that had been presented. I also left the surplus numbers on here from '22, '23, and '23, '24. And you'll see the unencumbered surplus. So this is things that, that they didn't spend money on and asked city council to roll over into the following year's general fund. Two years ago was $11 million. Last year was 10, almost $10 million. When I presented those numbers at the city council meeting last fall, Dr. Patillo said, "Well, I wish you had shown the teacher vacancy numbers." Because the teacher vacancy numbers are significant, and I agree with him. So, so I put the vacancy numbers in here. If you bump two slides, please. Next slide. Yeah, so, so here's the history on, on school system vacancies. And these numbers are straight out of the Virginia Department of Education website, their data website. So, so the schools have had a significant number of vacancies, not just in teachers, but, but across the board. And you can see last year, there's no data in there yet for this year, but last year, about a third of the total vacancies were teachers. A huge problem, 120 missing teachers. That's a big in-the-classroom problem. And so I get it that they want to implement their new pay plan all this, this coming year as a way to tackle solving the teacher vacancy problem. But, but, so let's give them, let's hope that they have a hugely successful year. Are they going to fill 362 vacancies with a hugely successful year? I doubt it. Okay? Not, not because they're not trying, but I don't think that there are people out there that they're going to be able to find even with the additional money. Now, so they have a $1.9 million bogey that, that the negotiations kind of left them with. And, and to your point, Councilwoman Thomas, at the school board meeting, they teed up programs to cut. I'm going to suggest $1.9 million of salary and benefits is about 30 positions. When Mr. Burke puts our budget, the city budget together, he budgets every department fully, 100% for their positions, but then he plugs a factor in when all of that's done to acknowledge that there's no way on God's green earth in a government HR system where you can't hire to fill a position until the, the position is vacant, which means you'll never have 100% fill. Because as soon as somebody leaves, you are incurring salary and benefits that, that you're not having to pay until you eventually hire the replacement. So, so if they had 30 vacancies, and they acknowledged that in their budget, they could, without doing anything but pulling out their pencil and putting $1.9 million negative into the budget to acknowledge 30 vacancies, the problem would be gone. They wouldn't have to fix a single program, wouldn't have to cut a thing. Simply acknowledge that there's, there's probably at least 30 positions that they're not going to fill next year. I hope they fill all the teacher positions, but the chances are there's going to be 30-somebodies in the school system that, that are not there. And that's salary and benefits that they're going to accrue. If you go back two slides, they're going to accrue, and it's going to show up at the end of the year as budget surplus. Because most of the surplus, and this is why Chairman Patillo was frustrated with me that I didn't show the vacancies in this slide, most of that surplus is unfilled positions and the salary and the benefits that go with it. But when you have 360, 400 positions, doesn't take very long to accrue $10 million of, of salary and benefits. Now, so why do I bring that up? Well, my point is, one solution to the school board's problem is if they direct their CFO to do what our CFO does, and that is to adjust the budget for historical vacancies. And all they got to do is throw 30 vacancies in there, and, and their budget is balanced. That's one solution. There's another solution. So, next slide, please. So this is the, from the school system financial report in January, which is the most recent one that I have. What it shows is that the little yellow dots there are suggesting that they're headed to expand by the end of the fiscal year somewhere between 87 and 90% of their general fund budget. Okay? The general fund budget is, that, that we approved in our budget last year was $210 million. Okay? So if they under-expend by 10%, that's $21 million that they're not going to spend by year's end. Okay? And based on the history, there's a pretty good chance that there's $21 million, and some of it will be encumbered, but some of it's going to be unencumbered. I'm going to suggest, if they wanted to, and if we wanted to work with them, we could turn to the city manager and say, "Tell you what, you cover the 1.9 million right now out of the general fund balance on the city side. And then in October, when they close their books out and they figure out that they've got a $20 million surplus, the first 1.9 million of that goes back into the city's general fund balance." Okay? Budget neutral. We loan them, basically loan them the money out of the fund balance between now and October, and then they pay it back in, out of their surplus come October. That's a notice solution. No harm, no foul. Bills paid, no programs impacted. So, so there's a couple of options here that I don't think the school board and the superintendent have explored. But I think in the, my, my understanding from talking to the manager and, and the budget director is at least they had those discussions when the negotiations were going on. And for whatever reason, they have chosen not to tee those up in front of the school board. Any school board, if you want to solve a 1.9 billion bogey, here's two easy solutions that require a pencil and not a single impact on a single program on the school side. And, anyway, so I offer two solutions to, to a problem that, that frankly, I'm going to suggest, you know, that they're, maybe they're going to make a lot, a lot about 1.9 million dollars that they agreed to in the negotiations. But I would say, based on the history, they have more than overbudgeted for vacant positions by, by more than 1.9 million based on, on recent history. But heck, let's spot them the 1.9 million and either ask them to, to acknowledge the vacant positions in their budget, which zeros the problem out, or we work a deal where we loan them the 1.9 out of our general fund balance, and they pay it back when they get to the end of the year out of the first 1.9 million that's going to be in their sizable end-of-year surplus.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Thomas, you have the floor.
Sir, so Councilman Hugel, it seems like you put some thought into this presentation.
Yes, ma'am, I have.
Okay. But was this presented at, at the liaison meeting, you and Councilwoman Bryant and city manager Carter, was this presented to the school board? And I ask that because, one, coming from the school board, they have a separate, you know, entity, separate staff that manage their budget, that we should also respect their ability to do their job.
Yep.
I wanted to know, have these numbers, because you said you worked out these numbers, was this discussed with Mr. Faulk, so that they got some feedback? Because some of the assumptions you made might not clearly be the right assumptions, and there might be some data behind that. That's one. Two, regarding the teacher vacancies that were pulled from the state, I think you said the VDOE website.
Yep.
Just come, just to note that those vacancies sometimes also do not include the fact that they have filled those positions, but it's not with the level of tenured teachers that you want in certain aspects of the classroom. So, so as you know, there's some university teachers, there's some international teachers. And then outside of teacher vacancies, one of the forward-looking things that they do have to think about as a school district are key positions in electrical maintenance, those electricians, their plumbing staff, and so forth. So there's a lot of other positions that are crucial to making the schools operate in a formidable manner. And at the level of what we want as a city to make our schools top-notch and attractive for our citizens. So I just want to put that out there. This presentation, or this, maybe if you answer it, were these type of solutions, was, was this data discussed in your liaison meetings, in your negotiation meetings for feedback? Because I think we're doing a disservice to put our numbers out there when they've also, they, you know, run their own budget as well.
Yeah, so, so I did not put my numbers in front of them at the liaison meeting, because I just worked up the numbers over this past weekend. But I did ask the manager to include the, any negotiations that they had. So I'll defer to the manager to speak to the discussions that were held about these ideas.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we didn't actually put a presentation together like this. We just had a conversation about possible solutions, all right? But one of the things that I, and it may have been you, somebody asked me, I thought it was you that asked me, "What program is going to be cut?" And the, and my response to you was, "I have no idea what programs we're going to cut. I'm allowing them to handle their own process." We agreed to numbers, not programs. You know what I mean? So yes, we suggested these as possible solutions. However, they come up with a solution inside their own budget, I, I didn't get into telling them how they should or even why they should. I allow them to do their own thing in their own budget.
And I acknowledge that it's their thing. So if they choose not to do any of this and cut programs, so that's what they get paid the big bucks for, to sit on the school board, just like we get paid the big bucks to make hard choices about where the pluses and the minuses are going to be in the city budget.
Yep.
And to your point on this slide, I, I acknowledge that 124 teacher vacancies last year were probably covered with substitutes or
Right.
University teachers or others.
And I'm talking about in critical courses, critical classes that impact the future of our students and their graduation, their ability to go to TCC first college and be successful. Also want to point out that the numbers, okay, so I think you had something up. Again, I need, I would have to validate these numbers, but just for your example, with the previous slide, the one, when, yeah, that one. I'm just kind of glancing at this really quick, but with the unencumbered, I think that says unencumbered budget, I can't read the last line, but the
You have the PowerPoints in front of you.
Oh, I do?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
The next one.
This one? Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, so just, I just want to put out there for, you might know, Councilman Hugel, but just for everyone's public awareness too. When the schools do, when they have those open positions and they add, they have to get the funds reallocated back to the city, most of those funds, for example, are due to salary vacancies. But, for example, just in this old school year, I think they started off with maybe 142 vacancies. Within this just time period, they've been able to cut that in half using the reallocated funds. If those funds were not there, they wouldn't be able to cut that number in half so quickly. So I think just understanding how the school operates and why that, why some of the suggestions might not work for the school is important, and important is telling the overall story. Are there some possible solutions to what you're suggesting? That would be, would have been a better conversation, I believe, to have when we had the conversation and the negotiations with the schools. That's, that's what I'm putting out. I just heard what was said at the meeting, why they would be at a huge detriment to not have the full ask of what, what was put out there. So I just wanted to put that out there for how, how those reallocated funds were able to be used to try to cut down the number of vacancies within the current school year. They're constantly hiring. And then, of course, at the end of the school year, you're going to have, you know, some attrition and some more vacancies. So you, it's not like you cannot have that funding there on the books. Will they be able to ever fund or hire all the vacancies at one time? Probably not. But they do cut it down as much as they can because it's, it's not in certain, certain areas where it's a nice to have. No, if you don't have a qualified or high-level teacher in a class, you're going to fill it, your student's going to fill it, your test score's going to fill it, and overall this city will fill it. So I just wanted to put that out there as a discussion point, too. Thank you.
Anybody else want to follow? Okay. One of the things I want to, all of us to understand is that, if we could just step back, it's, it's incumbent upon all of us to get the right understanding, but ever since I've been on council, we always seem to deal with a surplus of a significant amount, which historically tells me that we're not filling those jobs or those vacancies, and there is always going to be some vacancies that are not filled. At the end of the day, the city provides the money for the schools to use, 100%, and we provide that money for them to use to run their operations and get the job done, which they have been doing. Based on what this is, you know, my understanding with the 1.9, there was a negotiation, and the city decided that we did meet, meet in the middle with our 1.5, and they asked the schools to do 1.9. The money is there. Whether you want to say it's unencumbered or what it is, right now, the schools can write a check and they can cover that 1.9 million dollar gap. There's no issue with that, and that's the truth. The money's there. And even if we look at it, let's, let's not talk about anything conceptually, at the end of the year, when all the bills are due, we know that, based on the time that I've been on council, we've, we've given back to the schools about 10 million or more every year. I know that is a fact, but 10 million or more. So what that tells me is, just based on the money, historically, the money hasn't been spent on all the things that it needs to be spent on. We are at a situation where the, the difference is 1.9 million dollars, certainly. We don't want to see any of the programs cut. As a result, if you have the dollars, we, we can talk conceptually, we can talk how the schools budget, we can talk how the cities budget, but at the end of the day, every year that I've been on council, and Mr. Moody can probably attest to it, we've always had a significant surplus. And because of that surplus, we're asked to give it back, but it's continuous, it's continuously being rotated every year. And as you can see, we're at a point where those dollars need to be spent now. And so we don't have any issue as a council, I don't think, of them spending the money that they have. Councilman, Vice Mayor Moody, the floor is yours.
Councilman Vice Mayor Moody, the floor is yours.
Well, first of all, the manager's potential options for closing that gap, to me, are totally unacceptable. Number one. Number two is, in the two previous budget cycles compared to what we've already committed to, I don't care how you look at it, that's a 28% increase. And that 28% increase is also on a declining enrollment in the schools. So I don't think you can ignore that fact. If you've got less students and the budget is going up double digits each year, what's going on? Something's not right. And also, when you look at the DOE and look at the expense per student, Portsmouth is one of the highest cities in the Hampton Roads region. So I think we're being very generous on, we did what they asked for, okay? Number one. Now I come back, well, that's not quite good enough. We need to increase it more. And I want to commend Councilman Hugel for drawing out these two options that should be plain as day. I certainly didn't think of them. But the option, the second option, I think utilizing the return money that has been, the mayor's right. Ever since I've been on council, there's been double-digit and millions of dollars returned to the city. So I think we're good where we're at. I do like the second option. If we want to go ahead and upfront the 1.9 million, let's do it in that manner. Certainly not in cutting the pavement anymore or delaying city employees' pay raises. Those things are off the table from my perspective.
Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a couple of different things based on Vice Mayor's comments. Number one, all the uncertainty is coming from DC. Our school divisions are under attack. Portsmouth Public Schools as a school division, I'm going to say, just say it very blatantly, we are a DEI school division. We are a very diverse school division with students from all walks of life and we are seeing from DC funding being cut on the national level. We're seeing situations where the Secretary of Education has said her job is to cut her own position of having a DOE. That is then putting the burden back onto the Commonwealth, ultimately putting the burden back onto localities. Portsmouth does have a number of students who are in desperate need of education, which results in having to have a higher per-student dollar amount because of the needs that do exist in Portsmouth. I don't think anybody at this table can argue that Portsmouth is in a unique position where our students, minority students, our low-income students, they need those additional resources to be able to get ahead. To be able to attract the teachers is key, to be able to provide them a quality education. I am not, when the school division is presenting to us what their needs are, I think it's fair, to your point, you said, you know, we're giving them what they're asking for. What they're asking for is that additional 1.9 million. And I think that ultimately it is their job to manage their own budget. It's our job to provide the funding to do that. And I just don't feel comfortable in today's society having who we have in the White House, who we have in Congress, who are steadily attacking education, especially in cities such as Portsmouth. But we've already seen grants being lost because of, let's be real, we're a brown community. We lost water grants, but we're probably going to lose more grants because of what's going on in DC. And so I just don't think it's fair to put our school division in that situation until we get a better understanding of what is going to happen. There's articles, and I can share with council, that was sent not too long ago, where DOE has already started to cut money and not allowing schools to use all of their COVID money because of DEI policies or policies that the Trump administration do not believe to be suitable. So are we going to put our school division in a situation where they aren't going to be using funds? Because at the end of the day, we can generate funds, they can't. And so we need to be able to take that into consideration as well to make sure that the next three years, let's be real, it's going to be a bumpy three years with who we have in the White House. And I do not feel comfortable allowing our students to be at the mercy of that. And so I would just ask council to, let's provide this 1.9 million dollars to ensure good education in the city of Portsmouth.
Councilwoman Bryant, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank Mr. Carter, Mr. Burke, Dr. Bracy, Mr. Falk, for coming together and really taking several sessions to negotiate and get to know each other. And I think it's really important that we have filled in the council, but it's important for everyone to know that there's a lot of relationship building that was happening in these meetings and people coming together and recognizing that the relationship between the city and the schools needs to be a partnership and that we all have the same goals and that we all want to see positive outcomes. And with our further work session tonight, we are going to be working toward that even more by coming up with a plan that we can refer to hopefully in future budget sessions. And several of the things that we talked about in our meetings were beyond the budget and how we can collaborate in different ways to support the schools outside of just money. So I look forward to continuing that work with Councilman Hugel and with our staff, with their staff. But I think it's really important that people know that, that we are really trying to address some of the issues that were before and turn over a new leaf in planning for the future. Because we do recognize the value of our schools, we know that we need teachers. There are several things that the school system is doing that is new. There's Spark School Program, which is new, which I can fill you in on during our updates later. But they're being creative and they are targeting the areas that they know are struggling the most and that is all wonderful. I commend Councilman Hugel tremendously on providing some solutions that are different and recognizing that potentially using the surplus to fill the gap is something that we can do. I am also not in favor of cutting paving, city worker raises. We're trying to be very ambitious here in providing raises for teachers who deserve them. They need a step system, absolutely, and the school budget will provide that. The school board has emphatically said that that is their first priority, is funding the teachers' salaries. But I am not comfortable deferring city salaries or raising taxes. So I think it really is important to Councilman Tillage's point where we don't know what's happening with federal administration money. We get asked all the time, what are you guys doing to prepare for potential cuts? And we did see the BRIC grant cut from us, which directly impacted our water out at...
Lake Mead.
Lake Mead, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. And so it is really important, I think, that we're mindful of our spending, that we're cautious, that we're careful, that we take our time, we come up with creative solutions and that we continue to work together to see all of those solutions, which I think we've taken a big step in doing here tonight. So that is my feeling. I am really, really looking forward to a better relationship with the schools between the city piece and the school piece because we have not been working together, is my understanding from our liaison meetings, and we certainly will be doing that in the future.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Thomas, you have the floor?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And very well said, Councilwoman Bryant, about the push to build that better relationship with the school board and their leadership and between you and Dr. Bracy, Mr. Carter. One thing I wanted to circle back to was Vice Mayor Moody, you had asked about, or you had mentioned about, you know, the enrollment decreasing, but the cost per student increasing. And there's a lot of factors behind that. And I think in pushing to better understand those relationships, we, as a council, have to have these type of conversations. And I think they're starting, but with the schools, because there's a lot of pieces that are intricate to understanding why you might see decreased enrollment but increased student costs. And we cannot forget COVID, we cannot forget the pandemic. We are, what, five years out from the initial start of COVID, but our students did not return in-person school until, I think, 2021, 2022, late 2021. And so we're still, as a community, probably as a country really, looking at the impacts of that. So our students, today's student, needs more services, wraparound services than pre-COVID students. And that's a big part of the increase in cost, that's a big part of the decrease in enrollment. It's a, the COVID piece, we're still answering the question of. And so I just want to put that out there in terms of why, you know, we're noticing that. And also that part of the funding that Portsmouth Public School has put in place, part of the programming, part of the, you know, some of that funds that were reallocated from the previous year, I think about 5 million or so, was used towards putting towards this, you know, new CTE building, the new VOTX school, to make our students have more success going forward and to make sure they have a probable pathway, once they get out of school, to a successful career, to a successful salary and hopefully to becoming homeowners and staying in Portsmouth and building up our economy as well. There's a whole cycle of things that the funding is used for. And I do, I appreciate the cuts that you proposed. I also am not comfortable with cutting city salaries. I would like to hear more, if we could, about one of the proposals that Councilman Hugel put forward, but I just think that, or I would have hoped that we could have come towards finding or discussing as between a city and a school, what it looks like to fund that full 3 million and maybe having some of these discussions prior to now. I'm not saying they didn't happen, but it seems like there was a lot more discussion to happen with moving forward and fully funding the schools in a way that worked for them as well. Because I can't stress enough with the student and PPS and coming from the school board, there's real issues that they are prevalent since COVID that we're still answering and trying to find the solutions for. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Did you want the floor?
I did.
Because let's let Councilman Dawson have the floor, then you, Vice Mayor.
I've been attending some of the meetings for the last five years. And in most of those years, I've seen the school board come back at the end of their fiscal year and say, oh, we've got this 10 to 30 million dollar excess. And we've got this, suddenly, this brand-new project that we didn't tell you about during the budget cycle because they didn't bring us a budget. To me, that's poor fiscal management, just atrocious. And then there's people coming into the city council meeting to say, the city council is bad because they didn't give a couple hundred thousand dollar raise to the employees when there's a 20 million dollar excess. It angers me to see that kind of fiscal management over and over and over every year from our school board. It just angers me. Why can't they present us with the projects that they need at the beginning of the year instead of surprising us with this excess at the end of the year? They're great teachers, they have great projects, I've been in the schools, like Yolanda's saying, there's some special needs that we have. And like Bill's saying, we may be funding the highest in the tide water, but when we look at the state average, we're still under the state average for what we need to funding. So I think we're doing a great job of teaching and understanding the needs. We're doing a really bad job of fiscal management and the school board is doing, not the school board, but the school management is doing a really bad job of assassinating city council. I do not appreciate that being done. And if I see it again this year, I think I'm going to get a little upset about them coming to say, that city council is bad because they didn't give a couple 1.9 billion dollars and it's really going to impact your raises when in fact the money is there. It's right there and we're getting blamed for it as a city council. I think the school board needs to step up and do some of the things. And the first great step we've got is we finally in four years have a budget from them that we can look at and say, yes, this is what you want, this is your CIP. We can work with that. It is the first positive step I've seen since I moved back here. And I'd love to see us continue that without them coming forward and assassinating us as a group here. I really want to see good relationships happen between us and them. And I think it has to start there without seeing rallies out in the hallway of people saying things that the council's doing that aren't true. So yes, we do need to give the schools more money, but we need to understand how that money is, we need to understand the fiscal responsibility that the management in the school needs to step up and give us that they have not given us for the last four to five years. It's very, very important in that relationship to have that management perspective, very important.
Vice Mayor Moody?
I was going to just respond to my colleague on the COVID factor. The numbers I got off of the Virginia DOE report, those districts had COVID to deal with as well. So the numbers are a fair comparison as far as the expense and ADM. COVID was terrible, but all the school districts in our area had to deal with the same thing. And the numbers are the numbers. You know, what caused them to be higher in Portsmouth? I don't know if that's different from Hampton or Newport News, I had no idea. All I can do is look at the numbers and they are what they are. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Bryant, may I have the floor?
Thanks, Mayor. Can we, someone hopefully can clarify for us that aren't familiar, how the surplus works, what the differences between encumbered, unencumbered. At the end of the year, if we're projecting this surplus, where that money goes, they're supposed to, school board is supposed to come back to us and say, we have this surplus. And I believe it's in good relationship building that we traditionally say, you can keep that surplus, but it is required by the state that they formally ask us. It sounds like I'm off track.
I'm looking for Portsmouth.
What I'm, what I'm looking to understand is how the surplus is acknowledged at the end of the budget, where it goes, and what happens to it in planning for the future year. I'm not sure who, maybe Mr. Carter is best to answer that.
I'll give that a shot.
Okay.
Can I speak, Mayor?
You have the floor, sir.
The two categories was encumbered and unencumbered. Encumbered means I've decided where to spend this money. We've got some appeals out or we've got some requisitions out that says, we're going to spend this money, but the thing that I want to buy hasn't shown up yet. So the money's encumbered, like for your own personal checking account, you've written a check but it haven't cleared the bank yet. And then the unencumbered is, this is money that we have not determined, we have not tried to spend. It's just sitting in the bank waiting on something to happen. Municipal budgets everywhere requires that money to be returned to the city.
Correct.
Then a process has to be put in place to reallocate that money however the city sees fit.
Not to interrupt you, but in theory, we could say, okay, thanks, we'll take that money back.
Have a good day.
Or we could say, you guys keep that money, it's up to us at that point, but it is a formality that the school board asks the municipality. Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt.
For those places that don't go through that, there's already some revenue sharing plan worked out that kind of addresses that. And that's one of the things that we'll talk about later this evening, you know, how we can address some of those things. But the process is, we've allocated a certain amount of money. That money didn't get completely spent. So now that money comes, legally comes, gets back to the city. Now, school board says, hey, city, we got these plans that we'd like to spend this money on. And I think the tradition here in Portsmouth has been to give that money back to the schools. So they get to reallocate that money and spend it in the current budget as though it was just a part of their current budget.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on. Go ahead, ask the question and then he has the floor.
Oh, no, I just wanted to add some examples of the encumbered from the school, if I could. Like, for example, a lot of the maintenance to schools are done over the summer while students are not in those buildings. So that's why some of those funds might have been deferred to spend for those type of things, roof repairs, AC repairs, painting, all those type of maintenance issues. They're part of the budget, but they're not spent until technically after they have to return the money to the city and hopefully the city gets it back. And then a lot of the, I'll just speak from last year's perspective, since I was on the school board. since I was on the board, school board. But a lot of the unencumbered, I know one of the things we asked for was teacher retention bonuses to be, for some of that, because we're constantly trying to address, I say we, because I was on the school board, they're constantly trying to address keeping teachers at the end of their contract years. So, those retention bonuses that you're not planning for per se, but you're trying to prevent exodus of teachers at the end of their contract, you might have to use that for that as well. And that's why they're trying to, I won't speak for the school board. That was the whole idea behind, let's finally address the pay compensation, because we're constantly putting a Band-Aid on staff leaving, instead of just, let's fix it now and move on, so that we can better plan year over year for those costs. So, I just wanted to provide some context from that perspective. Thank you.
For those examples, yeah.
Vice Mayor.
Getting back to what constitutes encumbered funds, I thought it had to be more than a thought or an intention.
Actually, you've been, like, so you write the check.
That's correct.
It just haven't cleared the bank yet. So, there's a PO out or something like that.
Yes, a purchaser. Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to make sure my thought was correct.
You're still right.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilman Dodson, you have the floor.
What's concerned me, Councilman Bryant, in the past, is that when this unencumbered funds come back, all of a sudden, there's a new project, and it wasn't in the budget. So, I'm intent on highlighting in this year's budget, they've given us a budget with their CIP items, that if that unencumbered money comes back, we go to that list that they already gave us to fund that list. If they haven't given it, given us that list of what they think that money should go for in advance, I don't think that I would be in favor of seeing a brand-new project. Oh, we just got this new project. I think they need to think it through and present it to us when they present the budget, and say what that might go for in advance. I think it's just good fiscal management to do it that way, not to come at the end of the year and say, oh, we got it. Give it back to you. We should already have the list in advance to think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Tilling.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say, if we're going to work on positive relationships with the school board, we've got to stop with the assumption narratives. Because I've been on city council in Elford, this is my third year, and prior to this budget, the school board CIPs never made it into the book. And it wasn't always because of the city's fault. I mean, because of the school board's fault. A lot of it had to do with the city. So, there's a lot of fault that the city could take on that as well, on why CIPs wouldn't include it. But if we're going to do positive relationship building, I think it's a good start for council to, this management, bad management. But then, we do take an active approach with our city council liaisons, trying to make sure that we find the best way forward. And I just don't think that any attacks to the school board or from the school board to city councils should be appropriate. So, I'll just leave.
Positive wording on my part would be better. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you very much.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So, listening to the conversation, it sounds like there's maybe some willingness to authorize the city manager to go, continue a negotiation with Dr. Bracy, to offer 1.9 million out of the fund balance with a deal that, when they come through with their surplus in the fall, that they pay that back as the first expense coming out of that surplus. So, I'm going to propose that for consensus. And if we have consensus, then, I mean, now and tomorrow evening, I guess, I want to ask you to go back to Dr. Bracy and see if we can finalize that negotiation.
Can I make a point before you make that?
Yes, sir.
Request for consensus, is that open?
You have the floor, sir.
The fund balance is a one-time pot of money. That's not something that's recurring that we, that you won't. You're trying to fund something that's going to be recurring, because once we give that, the budget don't go down next year. The budget goes up next year. So, not only do I have to find that 1.9 million plus something else, whatever they ask for. So, that particular solution, I don't think is the right solution. I think the first solution that you provided was the best solution, if the council want to have some processing that. However, I just need you to understand that you're funding a recurring cost with a one-time allocation.
Do you want to trust that?
So, I understand, actually, both things can be viewed as a one-time solution. And my preference would be for them to solve the problem by addressing their vacancy salary and benefits. And so, but I think you've already had that conversation and got a no.
Again, and I want to make this perfectly clear for the whole group and school board that were maybe listening. What we talked about was numbers, how they get to their numbers, their numbers. We didn't have that discussion. We made suggestions, just like you were talking about. Hey, this is an idea. You can take it, you can leave it, you do however you choose to come up with your portion of the money that we need. Because I would be taken aback if Dr. Bracy would have said, hey, Steve, you know what? These are the things that you should cut out of your budget to make sure you can get this.
Sure.
So, I was respectful enough to do the same thing for him.
So, it's sounding like you'd like the flexibility to pursue both potential solutions? Is that what I'm hearing?
I do what the council suggests. The...
I got that, but...
But what I would suggest is the first solution. If you want to pursue both solutions, I'll do both.
Okay. So, then, I'm going to ask for consensus to give the manager authority to pursue both solutions, because we're out of time to come back.
We got to vote on this tomorrow.
That's exactly right. That's what I was getting at, you're saying.
So, if we tell you, try option one, and that's a no, we don't have time to recycle back to option two. So, I'd like to check to see if we have consensus to give them the okay to pursue either option as a solution, so that we don't end up chewing into school program.
Restate the options, please.
Okay. So, the first option would be for the manager to engage Dr. Bracy around including a acknowledgement of 1.9 million dollars of vacancy salaries and benefits. Second option would be for the manager to tee up. The city will cover 1.9 million out of the general fund balance now.
One time.
One time. And then, in the fall, when the school board comes back with their surplus, the first portion of that surplus allocation would be to pay back that 1.9 million to the general fund, to make the general fund whole again.
Well, to go and work it as that saying, just like, if I, it's okay, I'll make this comparison. We talked about the retirees getting a one-time supplement versus a raise. The reason I didn't want to go with the raise, because once you give that raise, I got to figure out a way to fund that every year from now on.
Some one-time.
Same thing with this. Right now, the budget is set at 82. If we move that to 84, I got to figure out a way to fund 84 from this day forward, not just this one time.
Well, I'm a little confused, because I know we've done one-time allocations before from a fund balance. I don't understand why you're indicating you've got to fund it. It's not like, you know, if we're taking a one-time shot, even if it's an increase, I don't understand how you commit to future raises. We're committing 1.9 based on the different options. We're committing the 1.9 that is needed for them to do what they need to do. That's not an ongoing, it's a one-time amount. And we've done that in the past, so I don't know how that differs. Perhaps you can explain it to us and help me understand.
Can I take the first shot at that?
Yeah.
It's pretty easy.
Okay.
Again, if the budget is 82.
I understand. I understand all that.
If we give them a one-time increase, the budget don't go back to 82 next year. The budget is 84 next year when we start. So, from that day forward, we're funding 84 plus whatever they ask for, not 82. So, even though we're calling it a one-time, we're taking it out of fund balance one time. But we got to find that money next year when it shows up again, when the same budget shows up again.
Okay. Well, Vice Mayor.
I hear what you're saying, but it's not like a salary increase.
It's exactly like a salary.
You know, if you give me a $10 increase this year, you're not going to take it away next year.
That's the exact same.
But a budget's not like that. A budget is predicated on a decision.
That's fair.
At the point of time. And there are factors that may say that it will go south some.
That's fair. But I can look at your history and predict your future. You have never decreased the school budget.
Say that again.
You have never decreased the school budget.
Say that again.
But that's why you're saying that, because that was where I was hung up, because a budget, I mean, if the dollar's not there, the budget could be different next year.
I understand what you're saying.
It's imagine the revenue versus expenses for a budget.
Yeah.
There's difference between theory and practice.
Yeah.
I understand. But I just want to make sure I wasn't losing where I was going, because a budget is different than a salary increase. A budget can, my budget in my company changes every year.
I understand. But I can look at your history and predict your future.
And that 1.9 is predicated on some circumstances that they say have come up since we agreed to the, what, the 232 million.
Total loss.
The original gap that we were trying to fund was 6 million.
Right.
Once we figure out how to deal with that, what we found out there was, the schools had assumed that the, I guess, the contingency that was allocated in this year's budget would be available for them in next year's budget. So, when we allocated that 3 million, and then the state kicked in some money for the teacher raises, we recruit that 3 million, and we lower some taxes with it, we lower some mortar bills with it, those kinds of things. So, that money was used. But for some reason, the schools just thought that money was still available and would be available in the next year's budget.
Okay. They'll just include the 1.9 in their estimate.
Okay.
It's next year.
But now, I'm on the record saying what I needed to say. Please proceed. I'm sorry.
Good explanation, good conversation. You get to a better understanding. That's what we're all suited to. So, you restate it again, because I think everybody got... Yeah, I want to just make sure all minds are clear.
So, I'm looking for consensus from my colleagues for the city manager to be authorized to pursue two options to solve the 1.9 million dollar bogey. First option is to have a discussion about acknowledging in the PPS budget, the salaries and benefits associated with vacancies to the tune of 1.9 million dollars.
Right.
The second option is to commit that we'll fund the 1.9 million out of the general fund balance with an agreement that when they bring their surplus back after the books close on this year, that the first 1.9 million of that surplus goes back into the general fund to repay the money that we're funding as part of the budget.
I'd like to ask, why we're limiting it to two options, because we also say that if a third option is brainstormed, that that also be allowed?
Yeah, we don't have a whole lot of time for...
We got to make a decision on this.
Yeah, we need to make a decision.
Can I add one other thing?
So, ideally, they would solve the problem themselves without cutting program.
That's what I'm saying.
But that's not an option that the city manager needs to pursue. That's school board doing, school board business. And God love them, if they can find that solution without cutting program, touchdown. If that doesn't work, then we're giving the manager the opportunity to help them.
And I understand that. We've talked about these questions. They still have the option of saying, no, we're not interested in either one of them.
Sure.
I was just to put clarity for your first option. You're basically asking for the school board to follow the direction of how the city notates vacancies in there.
Example, not the direction, yeah.
Oh, the, okay. I just wanted to make sure. The how we notate vacancies, like, for example, in our police department, is kind of the example.
So, I'm glad you asked that question.
Okay.
So, the way he funds the chief is he fully funds all of the positions that the chief asked for. So, chief's got 90 vacancies. The chief's budget has full funding for all 90 of those, because he doesn't know whether the chief's going to have 90 vacancies or 20 vacancies. So, he funds them all.
Right.
But then separately, he puts a item in the budget.
That's a negative expenditure.
Yeah, a negative expenditure in the budget. And this is across the city for some number of vacancies that the various departments are going to have. And by the way, the number in this year's budget, $7 million of salary, $5 million of benefits. Okay, so it's not a small number that we're baking into the city budget. And so, you know, the schools, as I said before, 1.9 million dollars, only 30 vacancies, given where they are, doesn't seem unreasonable that they could acknowledge that they're going to have more than 30 vacancies in next year's staffing.
I think, I just wanted to make sure I'm clear on what that municipal ask was. Thank you.
So, we all understood with the two options that were presented? Did you want the floor, Mayor? So, based on those recommendations, I'd like to show of hands on the consensus to support those two options. Okay, good. And what I want to...
Thank you, Dr. Congressman.
Good, thank you. And thank you guys for that dialogue. One of the things I want to convey to everyone, citizens included, and the members of our school board and leadership. In my experience and council's experience, one of the most important things that we fund, I believe, is education. And we have consistently, as a council, supported education. We understand the challenges within our schools. It's been documented. And I can, I don't speak to all the council members, but I want everyone to be clear that we are absolutely willing to work to make sure that we come up with the best solutions to meet the needs of our students. And full transparency, I have grandchildren in Portsmouth Public Schools, and some of my colleagues have children in Portsmouth Public Schools. There is no nefarious, outlandish way we want to try to not give the schools money. That just doesn't exist. We will do, as a council, what we need to do to make sure our kids have what they need, and our teachers to succeed. Now, the last thing I want to say is, we know that these are difficult times across the board, from the federal, state, and local government. But as I understand it, we all have to make tough choices. And sometimes, those tough choices don't always line up with everybody in the perfect way. At the end of the day, we have many needs in our community, and schools are one of those important needs. So, I would just ask that all of the folks out there who have something to say or have a comment or perspective, understand that that's what we do here. We work very hard together to listen to one another and come up with the best solution, given the option and the resources that we have. Just wanted to make that clear. Thank you all for the discussion. And Mr. Carter, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good work, group. Appreciate the discussion, the willingness to kind of work together on this and kind of figure. I will say that, you know, the meetings where myself and Dr. Bracy and our financial teams are together, they're not tense meetings.
They're really not.
Nice people to work with, yes.
We discuss what we have discussed. We put our options on the table, and we move on. It's not, there's no strong-arming or, you know, about to feel beat up at the end of it, kind of a thing, you know. And the other thing is, we don't have to create winners and losers in this. Either we all win, or we're all going to lose. That's enough of mine so far. So, Mr. Burke, you have another presentation? Do you want to skip now? Do you want to skip now?
It's up to you.
I guess it's going, it may change, so.
The budget went up by 0.4%.
Let's go with that.
Okay, so we're not doing this?
No, no, no. You got to write one T up.
There were more slides on the one I was.
Oh, sorry.
That was in the middle of this presentation where we started. All right, we're going to evoke even more conversation with this one. I thought the last one was good. Where can we start talking about this one? I've been told that. That we can't call it a funding formula, because there's some bad connotations associated with funding. We won't call it that. Matter of fact, I'll work with our marketing department to see if we can come up with a cool name like they did with the Innovation District. We can figure something out on that. All right, but tonight's, am I controlling this?
You. Know what hit?
Damn.
Try it. There you go.
Magic, all right, cool. Tonight's discussion was, first of all, what is the purpose of even trying to put one of these things together? We talk about some of the key components that's going to be necessary to make sure that we get included in that. Then we'll talk about how the process is going to work. Then what are the benefits to both sides of this? Because there are upsides, but there's also some downsides. We'll talk about what the key next steps would be. And then finally, there's going to be, and if you've already previewed the slides, if you know, there's some discussion questions I have at the end of this that I'd like for us to get into. Well, first of all, let's talk about what is the purpose, you know? What we're really trying to do is that discussion that we just had, minimize that as much as possible, because the process would already be predefined as to how that revenue sharing would go. So the goal, and we'll make sure that we really understand this, is that the schools end up with the funding that they need. We're not trying to put something in that's going to jeopardize our public school system or make it difficult for them to get their tasks done. We really want to make sure that they actually get what they need. Because remember, again, I said, if, there's no winners and losers in this process. Either we all win or we're going to all lose. So we're not really trying to do anything. But the intent is to balance the funding requirement between what the city can afford and what the school board needs. That's really the whole goal of this. These are the four key pieces that are going to be necessary for us to actually figure out how to come up with a revenue sharing plan. First thing is negotiate what that actual number is going to be and what taxes are going to be included in that number. So they'll get an opportunity to present what they want and we'll get an opportunity to present what we think is right. I will tell you what I will look at is the traditional funding of the school, based on what you've been getting. That is already some portion of our revenue. So that would be my basis for where we start. But you also have to have a mechanism in there for, hey, there's some one-time thing that's happening that's kind of out of the ordinary. How do we actually get that funded? So there has to be some way for Portman's Public Schools to acquire additional funding if necessary. And then, since all of this is going to be based on projections, you know, at the beginning of the year, I'll talk to Trey and he's going to tell me, hey, man, I've looked at all these things based on the trends, based on what happened in the past. I think our revenue is going to be X. But it's going to be, you know, I think Trey does some tremendous work. And I don't know if you've ever hit that number right on the head. Am I wrong or maybe I'm?
No, not yet. Maybe one day.
But because that's probably not going to happen, there's going to be some kind of reconciliation. If he over-projected and we got less than we thought, or he under-projected, we got more than we thought. And whatever that delta is, how do we address that between the schools and us? So I would think, you know, if we've agreed that a certain percentage is the number, if we're under that much, then we're going to have to recruit that percentage. If we're over that much, you're going to get that percentage more. So that's just, you know, how Steve is thinking about it right now. And no, I haven't had any conversation with anyone about this yet. And finally, that piece that we talked a lot about tonight, what are we going to do with those unused school funds at the end of the fiscal year? No matter how much, you know, they try to budget and we try to budget, we come up with all these numbers. Again, when you produce a spending plan the way we do, it's really difficult to hit it right over the head. Either we're going to have some fund balance left at the end or we're going to be underfunded and we're going to kind of come back to you guys and hey, guys, we got to do a budget adjustment because we missed the market. Well, the same thing is happening with them. They're never going to hit the number right over the head. They're either going to be over or under. And when they're over, they have some unused funds. So what we want to do is already put a mechanism in place to deal with those unused funds. That's why some jurisdictions don't have to come back and go through that process, because they've already worked it out ahead of time. I think Norfolk has a revenue sharing plan. Virginia Beach has one, Hampton has one. Those are the three, speaking with my colleagues that have provided me copies of what they're using currently. How does it work? Kind of already talked about this, you know, sometime in October, we're going to get together and we're going to kind of figure out what we think the tax revenues are going to be. Sometime about February, that's when we start really putting numbers to the game. That's where we're going to, we're agreed that this is the number we're going to work from. But then, what we really want to do is make sure that the numbers we lock in this year works as we move forward. So there'll be periodic reviews, just to make sure that those numbers still function. They do what the city needs them to do, they do what the school board needs them to do. So it won't be, hey, this is a one-time negotiation, we're never going to talk to you guys again. It's going to be something that we do regularly, just to make sure that although we try to put our best work forward the first time, we may miss the mark some and then we might have to do something better in some subsequent years. What are some of the benefits? Most importantly, stability. We, they can, they don't have to wait to talk to the city to understand what their budget's going to be. They get the same predictions that we get. They can go off and start doing their things. We can plug those numbers in and we just move forward. So it's really predictable. But we also got to build in some flexibility. Again, no matter how great we are at looking at our past and looking at our future, the chances of us hitting the nail right on top of the head is slim to none. So we got to build in some flexibility. But this is another key piece, is that transparency. There's no secret meetings. Everybody knows, I can tell you what I think my revenue is going to be next year, not even the budget year I'm in. Tell you what I think it's going to be next year and you can already start working on your budget for next year. So it's really transparent as to what's going on, how it's going to be funded, because we've already agreed to some of these things ahead of time. And also, based on that flexibility and transparency, we build in the ability to grow. Great thing is, because we got school system that's working with us to help our economic development, when our tax base increase, their share increase. We have a city aboard here, aboard there, our economic development, all of our private partners, all of us working to better Portman. Because when we're all working together, when that tax revenue increase, everybody wins. So there's some flexibility and growth built into this. All right, so how do we actually make this happen? First of all, it's going to be a bunch of meetings. Talking about those four themes that we had listed there previously. How do we come up with a plan of getting those four things negotiated and then back in front of the council, back in front of the school board, so that both groups can become comfortable with those things that we talked about? Once we get those things, we'll get with the legal team and have a real document produced so that, hopefully by the next budget season, we kick this thing off and we're rolling automatically. A lot of the frustration, a lot of the tense things that we tend to feel right now will be alleviated, because we've already worked this process out ahead of time. So, one of the key questions. As we're looking at this. Should the city council play a more active role in accountability for how funds are used by Portman Public School System? Or should we not really worry about that, but just act as a funding arm, fund what they need, allow them to do what they do, and we press on? That's going to be a key question in our discussion this evening. Some other things I'd like for you to think about. So if you saw that, there's some accountability. What does accountability mean? How do we define what that accountability is? And with that, and what level of involvement does the city council believe is appropriate? But look at number four also, that says, how should the city council balance its responsibility to tax holders with the need for the school to be able to function as a school system also? So that's kind of the whole briefing in nutshell. Through some questions out there that I really need you guys to think about, I'll entertain and try to answer any questions that you may have of me about what it is, what those four pillars mean, what's the next step, how we move this process forward, and what's the benefits to our city.
Vice Mayor Moody.
I think it would be good to see what other localities who have a formula in place, to see some details on that and maybe some perspective on how they feel about it. And maybe as a council member, I can reach out to some of the colleagues on those councils as well. One thing that comes to mind is, obviously, this school system gets their own revenue from the state. That also varies. So I'd be interested in knowing how, if you got a formula on our side, we can project what our revenue is going to be, but it seems like the funding from the state is always in flux up until the last minute. So how's that trued up, you know, each year? If, you know, as administrations change in Richmond, that funding could possibly change.
Absolutely.
And does. So I think that's some of the questions. As far as council members having an input or on what programs the school system needs, I think we still need that separation, so we're not, you know, we got a, since we got a funding formula.
Okay, Paul, a bit.
I don't, I don't think it means that we need more involvement on telling them how to manage their programs or the school system. I think we can express an opinion, but I don't think we, that needs to be reflected in any funding formula, per se.
Councilwoman Bryant.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Carter. I think this is a wonderful step in the right direction of what we're trying to achieve and what tone we're trying to establish. And I really hope that this is something that we can create as soon as possible. I think it's really important to acknowledge that the school board members are elected officials and they are experts in that area and that role is set aside for them to make decisions related to the schools. I think one of the things that we can do is indicate the positive programs that they are creating that we support, things like the STEM programs, the teacher salaries, the retention opportunities, the Spark School, if that's something that turns out to be successful for them. So in keeping with Councilman Tillich's comment from earlier in offering support to the schools, one of the things that we need to do is point out their accomplishments and.
Thank you.
And make those clear to the community that we want to see funding continue in this way. So I think this is a wonderful opportunity and I do think the school board members are valuable elected officials and we need to recognize that that is an important role for our city and respect that is their job. Thank you.
Councilman Dodd.
I agree. It is not our responsibility to manage the schools or to really hold them too accountable for it. There's a reason for the separation. I definitely agree with probably most of this council. But we need to see performance standards. They are not presenting performance standards as we are demanding of our employees. I believe we should also at least demand to see performance measurements and performance standards from them, so that we can talk about the schools. Because right now, the information, when I asked for them, I said, well, go to the superintendent's report. And I'm like, how many parents are going to go to the superintendent's report to understand? I think the school board is responsible for presenting performance standards, just showing us how they're doing. And don't confuse that with us tying that to funding. That's not what I'm asking for. I'm just saying that there needs to be more presentation of what's going on than what we've seen in the past. And the first great step we've seen is this budget coming forward. I mean, it's a big step, so that we can now say, with that excess money, what are we going to do with it? We've got a list to go by. But I'd like to see how they're doing publicly. I'd like to see represented to parents and it's not being done.
Councilwoman Thomas, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I like this kind of concept being put forward. I think it's a great step forward to move in a positive manner so that when the city is on the up, schools are on the up, it's, to me, a win-win. I agree with Vice Mayor Moody, like it would be great to kind of get some feedback from those localities that already have it. I was not, I don't even know if I was living back here at the time when we had a funding formula in place. I don't remember how that went. I know there was, like you said, some ins and outs about that whole thing, but I think there's been some positive from, just looking from the outside in, from other localities that have a revenue sharing formula in place with the school. So I think this is a great step forward. I'm interested in us, you know, continuing the discussion, like you said, with the next steps. And the word accountability, when you had it on slide eight, my first question was what does accountability mean? And then it happened to be your first question on the next, on the next page. I think that's, I don't know the answer to that now. I know you're looking for our feedback there. But I do think that term accountability is going to be one of the most important pieces that we as a council define, because to Councilwoman Bryant's point, they are elected officials too. But then, I think someone said, we also answer to the taxpayers of how we spend every dollar. So I'll put some more thought into that. I don't have any thoughts. But that is, to me, that first question is one of the key, key pieces to making this work and gel in a positive manner.
Councilman Tillich.
Thank you, Mayor. You have the floor. Mayor Carter, to your point about a baseline, I think it's important that when we do this, we do have a baseline. I think that was one of the downfalls to when the quote-unquote formula was proposed back in like 2017, 2018. At that time, it was proposed and when the formula calculated what the new revenue would be for the schools, it was actually less than the year prior. So to your point you made earlier, once you go there, we're not going back. And that was an issue that was there back in 2017, 2018, was it was, I think it was a pretty substantial decrease to the schools back then. So I think it's important that we start with a baseline of what it looks like without the COVID and others. And the formula is in addition to, instead of cutting back. And I think having that understanding is very crucial for the city school board, city council relationship, but also to the citizens as well, because then they know, like you said, the accountability measurement of how their taxpayer, tax dollars are being used for.
And can I add something to that? What I can promise you is that it will be in addition to. Like, the promise is that it will be based on what it is now. So, let's say we come up with whatever that number is. If we have a horrible year, then that won't be in addition to. That'd be a minus from. You know, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, but it's based on the strength and weakness of the city.
Exactly. So, I can't, I can't guarantee in addition to every year.
Yeah, like I said, I think back then, 2017, 2018, it was one of those things where it was cut substantially, and there was no measurement to show that it was the city doing bad. It was more of a political.
Right. Good information to have. Thank you.
Councilman Hugel, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, I have two comments on slide four, which are your four key components. So, second floor, funding requests for things like CIP. So, while I appreciate Councilman Tillage giving credit for improvement in syncing up CIP, it's still pretty clunky. And so, I think that this talks to the funding for CIP. I think it needs to also talk to the process to get CIP figured out, a CIP plan figured out, because as we saw at the most recent liaison meeting, they have CIP once. We have to fold that into the bigger CIP plan for the whole city. And, and there was still some synchronization that was, was.
Necessary.
Yeah, yeah. So, so making sure that we address the process for doing CIP as part of, not just the funding, but the mechanism for prioritizing their needs and the total needs. And then my second comment kind of relates to that. I think it's important that somewhere in here, we build unfunded priority lists. So, kind of coming back to, we get the end-of-the-year surplus. Instead of having the unencumbered portion of the end-of-the-year surplus feel like funny money that goes to whatever happens to be on the plate at the time, in the process of building the budget, seems to me that's the right time on the city's side, but also on the school's side, to build the unfunded priority list. Okay? It's the, the first three things that didn't make it into the budget, but if another dollar came free, that's the first thing that we would fund with it. That's the second thing. That's the third thing. Having that kind of thought put into the budget process, I think allows us all to take a look at reallocating excess revenues either against city unfunded or against school unfunded thoughtfully, instead of, yeah, we got some money, let's, let's go spend it, which is kind of the way it's felt when we've seen the surplus discussion come, come back to us the last few years.
Comment on that, Mayor. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. You know, last year, with the permission of this council, we kind of put some of those things in place to, for the, the excess money at the end of the year.
On the city's side.
Well, it was agreement between us and the school of how it would be implemented. There was cap set in place, I think there was a $7 million cap. There was, there was a definition about what it can be used for. I'll send that back out to the group to kind of refresh your memory on that, because that will be coming up at some point here. But we kind of already worked through a plan for addressing that piece of it.
My recollection, though, was the ground rules that were built were, had to do more with, this is how much of your surplus can be parked in the CIP reserve fund, and this is the total balance, no more than the total balance that you can carry. But there's, like, right now, there's no specificity coming out of this budget process on when they come back at, at surplus time and put money into that fund. There's nothing that, that they've outlined, at least shared with us, okay, if, if we get $7 million in there, here's the first thing we're going to spend it on. And so, having some unfunded priorities that, they advertise so that, so that we know these are your priorities that didn't make it into this year's budget, and when the time comes to spend the money, we're actually seeing the money obligated against priority one, two, and three, instead of something else.
I think it's written such that it has to be one of the already identified CIP projects. Can't be a brand-new project.
Thank you.
We good?
We're good. So, I, I did have one thing. So, revenue sharing, good concept. It really kind of suggests that we're, we're, for the first time since I've been on council, we're going to be a real partnership. And I think as we go forward with the challenges that we have currently, and as we move forward, it's important that all of us, the council, the school board, that we really work as a team in tandem to get the desired result. I like the idea that you're going to bring some best practices to the table. And, and, and part of the process for me, it really has to be an education, right, on all parties, really an education to really kind of talk through the process, because as I said through the process before, there was a lot of, lot of misinformation, right? And, and with misinformation, what happens is you get folks out in the community all spun up, and then misinformation causes the whole negotiation or the discussion to fall apart. One thing I would ask my colleagues, and I would ask the leaders of the school board, let's all do this in a true, true spirit of partnership, and, and let's work collaboratively, and let's deal with those issues as professionals and not make it about this pocket in the community, that pocket in the community. I guess some would say, make it political. Look, at the end of the day, our children and their futures shouldn't be political. Let me give you an example. I was at a meeting earlier today, and what happened was they were discussing the first college program in the city of Portsmouth. Great program, I talked about it at the state of the city. Well, you know with this first college program, we graduated, I think, last year, 30 to 40 students, somewhere around there, in the first college program. As a percentage, Portsmouth graduates the highest percentage of first college students in the region.
Yeah, exactly.
Virginia Beach, they got thousands of students, but they don't graduate as many students as we do here in the city of Portsmouth. Why do I say that? Because that's a collaborative program, right, with, with the city, with the schools, and with private, private money that, that goes into that program. So, the reality is, let's, let's start working on those things. Let's start looking at how we can elevate this opportunity for all of our students and, and keep it about that. And that's why I like this whole revenue sharing, because trust me, it causes all of us heartburn. No one, no one, no one wants to take something from a child, right? But that's how it's framed. That's not what we're here to do. We're here to come up with solutions to make sure that we can have the resources that can fund education for all of our students.
Absolutely.
Amen. Thank you.
I just, this is separate from that, but you brought up first college, and just for the public, they have a graduation happening tonight, so we'll probably see the rollout of what students from Portsmouth Public Schools are graduating from that program tonight, which is a definitely plus, and I'm sure, hopeful that we'll still have the most number of students graduate across.
That's something to be proud of.
It's really proud, yep.
Well, thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for allowing us to present to you this evening. Let me say, I'm proud of the work that you guys are doing. You guys are, have some hard discussions. That's what you're here for. Remember, I, I said at the retreat, your job is to vote. We're going to put things in front of you that's, that's not going to be a, you, you get a lot of the, hey, we got a grant for this, can we all, yeah, we, we get some of those. Some of these things aren't going to be that easy. And seeing the way that this group has been able to have these discussions, maintain the professionalism that I know is in all of us, present our city as one that's worthy of having these kind of discussions, coming up with solutions, and protecting the brand. Let me say, I appreciate all of you guys for what you're doing there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And on behalf of council, I would like to thank you and your team for the work that you put in in bringing these kinds of solutions. It's important that we know that we are supported in that way, so thank you and your team as well, Mr. Carter. And with that, we'll go ahead.
I've just been advised of one thing that we kind of forgot in this. Took the consensus of, hey, I need to go reach out to Dr. Brayce and offer a couple of solutions. Now, what we didn't figure out, though, is how do I get that back to you so that we can get an inordinate, so that you can vote on it tomorrow evening? So, that's going to have to be through an email or a phone call to let you know, accept it, denounce it, or, because we're presenting a budget to you today. If nothing changed, what you see today is what you're going to get tomorrow.
Madam Clerk, do you have any suggestions on how that communication should take place?
Uh, no.
Thank you very much.
We can't come back. We can't come back.
Come back. He tried, he tried, it struck me here, so come on over here.
So, typical, so you do have the ability to come back at a later date. You can adopt the budget as it is presented.
And amended, right.
And then amend it before the start of the year. I don't like that option.
We passed the budget we don't want.
Whether it's email or phone call, can just all, make sure all seven of us get the correspondence.
Absolutely.
None of us walk into a surprise tomorrow.
Oh, without a doubt.
Kind of like surprises.
So, yes, I will send an email, but I will endeavor to actually get you on the phone and say it to you. This is what we got. So, if you, if you don't get a phone call from me, and I'm going to say about, by 2:00 tomorrow, check your email, because I will have already called, and we missed each other, and whatever the solution was, was presented in that email or presented in that phone call. But check your email. If you don't hear from me by 2:00, check email, because there'll be an email that says, we're either moving forward the way it is, or we made some adjustment.
Just make sure it's not back-and-forth conversation.
Correct.
About what he's sending to you.
That's what I was asking.
If you don't mind.
Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
It's kind of late to mention this, but I, I feel it's important. Our six cents tax credit.
Yes, sir.
Okay. To me, that doesn't exude much faith in the direction our city is heading in. We did a tax credit last year. We're doing a tax credit this year. If people look up what our tax rate is, they see $1.30.
That is the rate.
That is the rate. You know, if we have faith truly in what we're doing, and I do, I think that needs to be reflected in the tax rate, period. And if the need arises that we need to change that, either up or down, by golly, that's why we getting paid the big bucks to make that decision. So, my, my suggestion is, let's make this, instead of a $1.30 tax rate, let's make it for what it will be, and that's a $1.24 tax rate.
Is there some public meetings that has to happen with that?
No, it's only increase, not decrease.
Not, not if it's a decrease.
It's just increase.
Well, the agenda tomorrow night has something on there about a tax increase.
That had to be done because of the assessment.
Yeah, assessments went up.
That's the part of the assessment.
Mayor, I would like to offer that as a consensus, to see if it's a consensus to do that. Are there any, and I hear you, sir, I, I guess, are there any, any issues with that? Is there potentially any issues with that?
Yes, sir. I think the issue with that is, is easy to sit around the table and say, well, decrease our tax. That's a hard thing to do when you got to increase your tax. What you have built into what you have now is a leverage to move it back and forth in there without actually having a tax increase. But there's an effective tax rate, there's a published tax rate, and I think that's what he's trying to reconcile here.
Absolutely. You know, I, 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 I just, I just think, and this is just me, I'm, I'm speaking as one member of council, I just think for this year, because of the timing, I think that, that we move forward with what we have stated today. I think next year, we could certainly look at all the data and make it an official, whatever tax rate decrease or whatever we decide it is. I just, you, you know, it's, it's, it's budget season time to make adoption, and I think what we've proposed and what's on the street is solid and sound, and I just don't think we need to confuse it at this time. I'm one voice. We will remain $1.30. I call for a consensus on that.
Okay. Let's get a rest of the discussion. You have the floor. Yep, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I agree with Vice Mayor Moody. I think that we owe it to the citizens to provide them a permanent reduction. We've done tax relief, this will be my third year on council doing tax relief, and it is, it's confused, a confusion thing, especially when you already have to worry about the inflation of the assessments. And when you're speaking to the citizen, not everybody fully grasps the idea behind the actual rate versus the effective rate. And I think, you know, when we sit there and we look at the tax rates amongst all the cities, this six cent increase over the second highest, which I believe is an awful, at $1.24. So, I think it's incumbent upon us to, to do, you know, I think, I know I ran on lowering taxes, and I think it's important that we provide our citizens that permanent relief. And every year, I mean, technically, you have to adopt a new tax rate every year anyway. So, just because it's the rate for 2025 doesn't mean it's going to be rate for 2026. So, I think it's a good faith effort that we, not only that we're believing in the work that we're doing, but we're showing the citizens that we thank them for their dedication and commitment to the city as well.
Anybody else have an opinion?
I do.
Go ahead.
Of course.
You have heard him about this meeting.
So, two years ago, I fought to lower the rate, and the city manager at the time counseled me and said, Councilman Hugel, are you going to have the political courage to raise the tax rate if we need to raise the tax rate after you've lowered the tax rate? And I said, okay, that's a fair question. Okay, so, so now I'll, I'll turn that question around to my colleagues. So, this year, we are decreasing the credit by a penny. So, if I had had my way two years ago, it would have been $1.25. Last year would have been $1.23, or actually, this year would have been $1.23. Now, so, the manager needs $1.24 to cover the budget. Would we have the political courage to bump the, the rate up a penny to cover this year's budget? There's a certain amount of flexibility to monkey around with the credit because, as has already been said, we all got to explain the credit, because everybody sees $1.30 on their property tax bill, and they don't necessarily keep reading to see, and the credit is.
The credit shows up.
Is down further on the bill.
It is.
And so, yep, I've just right along with y'all. At Civic League meetings, I've had to go to the whiteboard and, and draw out the equation so everybody understands what we're doing. But it's easier for me to do that than it is to sit here and say, yeah, I'd have had the political courage to raise the tax rate a penny instead of monkeying around with the credit, which is basically what we're doing. So, I say, leave it alone.
Thank you. Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. I will say, prior to being on council, I probably was one of those citizens that didn't scroll to the bottom to read the credit. And another point about just how it, you know, looking at this from a bigger picture. And another point about just how it, you know, looking at this from a bigger picture, when people talk about buying homes in Portsmouth, they don't know about the credit, they just know about that flat, we're the highest tax rate in the whole hip to road. So I do think, yes, it's a political courage, you know, that would be appropriate to do, but I also think there's a trade-off that, for folks that are looking into the home-buying market, and we're talking about attracting more people to Portsmouth to grow our economy, that is a positive, another positive side of actually, you know, reducing that rate a bit. So there's, I just wanted to offer that perspective too, but yes.
Councilman Dodson, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, sir. Both ideas are great, I think, and I'm wondering whether we could reach a compromise in the middle. We do need to lower the rate. The question is not lowering it, it's just how much. And I think we do need to keep some of that flexibility in it, so that there's no political sacrifices in the future that need to be made, but $1.30 has got to go. So I'd love to see it at some different number than what we have now, maybe lower it three cents, somewhere in that range, to get some progress.
Sneaking up on it.
Yeah, he tried to have his cake and eat it too.
Yes, yes, I am. We do need to show the citizens that we're willing to lower the rate. It's important to them right now.
What we're talking about now is reflecting the actual rate.
Right.
Which, to my colleague's point, you know, somebody looking to come to Portsmouth, they look up the tax rates in the various cities, and we stand out like a sore thumb at $1.30. Then, if you read this fine print down at the bottom of your tax statement, there's a six cent credit. Now, to me, that does indicate some cowardness on our part as council members that we really, that we really don't have faith in the direction that we're going, because we want to keep that there, just in case, so we don't have to tell you, that $1.24, we got to raise that. Well, that's our job, to show some political courage. So that's my stance.
I'm not running for election.
Councilwoman's been thrown down. Councilwoman Black.
You all are presenting wonderful arguments on both sides. I think the strength of this council is, there's a lot of good perspective to add here. I want to know from Vice Mayor Moody, is your initial, bringing this up, is this based on your confidence of where we are going as a city? Are you feeling, aside from the black and white of the numbers, the numbers should reflect what the number is, are you speaking to a larger picture of you have confidence in where we are going in creating an increase in our tax base, and that hopefully, we won't need to raise because we're going to be increasing?
Absolutely. And I think if we can't do that, we're really not, we're hedging our, all this optimism that we're showing, we're showing it on one hand, on the other hand, say, we're not too sure about that, so we're going to...
This is a call for us to admit to what we're trying to achieve. It does feel very last minute. It's difficult to make these decisions as new council members, especially at a last minute like this, but I appreciate your perspective.
And that's my fault, because I mentioned it to the mayor, I think, a couple of weeks ago.
You did.
And my 39-year-old memory, I've just forgotten to bring it up. But anyway, that's...
Councilman Tillage, then, Councilman Dodson.
I think, you know, I think it's time that we show confidence in our efforts. I think we made great strides over the last two and a half years, and, you know, you did a great state of the city a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, it was good.
The slogan that was very catchy was, "The city that moves you." And so I think it's important that we make sure it's where the city that moves people in to the city of Portsmouth, and not move them out. And so I think this is a good effort to show the work that this council has done. It's a good effort to show that we're believing in the faith of our city staff, we're showing the faith in our school division, we're showing faith in everything that makes Portsmouth what it is, and that, at the end of the day, if that decision has to be made, God forbid it doesn't, but if it does, that, at the end of the day, we're elected to make those decisions. And to Mr. Carter's point, you say yes or no, and put money where it might go.
Councilman Dodson.
Put some math to this, and I always like to put math and measurement to it. What difference in our budget, and I know the answer, but I'd like to hear you say it, does one cent make in our budget?
Roughly a million dollars.
So each one cent makes a million dollars. So a total move here makes a total difference of only $6 million, if we're talking about? $7 million?
Yeah, but we're not talking about, the numbers don't change.
Correct. No, but...
It's just the picture changes.
Perception. But the point is, the point is, it doesn't make that much of a difference to actually take this very bold move in our budget. It really doesn't.
Oh, it doesn't matter this year. It's baked in this year.
So not to belabor the point, the vice mayor has called for consensus on moving the tax rate permanently to $1.24. Is that correct, sir?
This year.
This year? This year, okay, with the quantifier, the qualifier of this year, all in favor of making that happen this year? Let me see your show of hands.
That's it.
Oh, man.
Done.
And it was partly due because we were called a coward, so we have publicly been called cowards. There's been some strong language from two of my colleagues, mismanagement of some individuals. I agree with Councilman Tillage, that sometimes we need to be careful with our words, because words do matter.
Yes.
But we all understand that, but I know this man, our vice mayor, and he calls me a coward in a good way.
My job here is done.
I think your job, Councilman. It's important that we have consensus that we believe in where we're going.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is your opportunity.
I would agree 100%.
Go for it, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so now we...
And your state of the city, put us on that.
When you call me out, I guess I got to perform. We do have a need for a closed session, so if Vice Mayor would need to read the closed session motion?
I moved to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A8 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel specifically regarding shootings in the city.
Second. Madam Clerk, would you call the room?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Thank you.
You take a five-minute break.
Such public business matters that were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered, and the closed meeting just concluded.
Second. Madam Clerk, would you call the room?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Dodson?
Here.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Thank you.
This public work session is adjourned. See you tomorrow at 5:00 PM.